Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Dengan penggemar, kita akan memulai sesi pada 9.00. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Kepala Eksekutif Urbanis Malaysia, Tamploena Noliza Hashim. Partner pengetahuan 27 advisory, penggemar, pembicara, peserta, representatif lokal dan internasional secara fisik dan virtual. Selamat malam, perempuan dan seorang pria. Sekarang kita sudah sampai pada akhir MOF 2020 di hari ketiga. Untuk forum hari ini, kita akan melanjutkan dengan Sesi 5. Mendorong keterwujudan melalui teknologi dan inovasi. Apa sifat teknologi dan inovasi untuk keterwujudan? Dan bagaimana mereka didefinisikan? Untuk diskusi hari ini, saya ingin mengajari lima panen kami dari agensi federal, perusahaan profesional, bisnis, dan startup untuk berbagi pemikiran dan pembangunan ide kami. Sekarang saya ingin mengundang yang berusaha, dokter Samshini Binti Sam Sudin, Deputi Direktur Jenderal Plan Malaysia. Mohon terima kasih. Yang berbahagia, Tan Sri Datoh Ahmad Zaidi, akademis, teknologis, presiden Board of Technologists Malaysia. Partner aktif App di活Life dan orang yang berkompetitif, Mr. Arif Imran, Kepala Eksekutif dari Serv Technology, St. Rembrad. Kami baru memulai App ini di hari pertama forum Malaysia. Miss Maymuna Binti Jafar, Direktur Teknologi dan Inovasi dari Regional Development Authority Iskandar. Mohon terima kasih. Dan Mr. Pang Sui Lee, Direktur Eksekutif Teknologi dan Inovasi dari Pamerah, St. Rembrad. Terima kasih banyak untuk menerima offer kami dan hadir di sini hari ini. Dan kami juga memiliki dua personality diskusi. Sekarang saya ingin mengundang Mr. Eric Chan, Direktur Residensial TRX Lendlies. Untuk memberikan perhatian keseluruhan tentang topik dan diskusi ke akhir sesi. CEO of Urbanis Malaysia, Madam Noliza Hashim. Tidak ada yang lebih lanjut, saya ingin mengundang partner pengetahuan kami, Mr. Girish Raman Chandran, Direktur Eksekutif 27 advisory. Mr. Girish telah menjadi pemain kemenangan dalam teknologi dan terlibat dalam banyak proyek pembangunan negara lain, termasuk Framework Smart City Malaysia, Framework Polisi Nasional untuk Revolusi Industri Keempat, Master Plan Kota Kuala Lumpur Kompetitif, dan Plan Development Asia Socio-Economician untuk relaikan kereta tinggi yang menghubungkan Kuala Lumpur dan Singapura. Mohon terima kasih di panggung.
Terima kasih, Rizal. Selamat pagi, semua orang secara fisik yang ada, panen kami, dan semua orang yang menonton ini online, di Facebook dan virtual. Ini adalah perhiasan yang luar biasa di sini hari ini, pada minggu sabtu, untuk memoderasikan sesi ini. Dan ini adalah sesi dua jam, dan saya harap saya akan bisa membela. Kami memiliki panen yang sangat berbeda, terdiri dari kombinasi dari sektor pribadi, serta GLC, serta pemerintah. Dan topik hari ini pada dasarnya adalah tentang teknologi dan inovasi, yang dikombinasikan dengan keterwujudan dan kota. Ini bukan topik yang sederhana bagi kita untuk memiliki diskusi yang sangat berhasil. Tapi apa yang saya lakukan adalah saya mencoba memberi panen sedikit penjelasan tentang pertanyaan apa yang terjadi, supaya kita bisa benar-benar masuk ke dalam kepentingan, masalah, masalah dan tantangan. Jadi ada tiga bagian dalam sesi ini. Kami akan mulai dengan, untuk memahami panen kami sedikit lebih baik. Dan kemudian kami akan masuk ke topik ini tentang teknologi dan inovasi di kota dan semoga mencoba untuk mengidentifikasi tantangan. Dan saya akan memberikan manfaat Lisa, mungkin karena datang lebih lama untuk membantu kami memberikan perhatian sebagai pembicara. Dan juga tentang, Anda tahu, apa yang akan kita lakukan selanjutnya. Objetifnya pada dasarnya adalah ya, obyektifnya adalah tentang partisipasi aktif dari berbagai grup, menciptakan kota inklusif dan keterwujudan melalui inovasi teknologi. Dan untuk diskusi peran inovasi ini sebagai mesin untuk keberhasilan sosial. Dan juga melihat rentang teknologi saat ini dan inovasi yang dapat diberikan. Dan juga untuk mengikuti diskusi tentang holistik, pragmatic, dan aspek teknologi dan inovasi urban post Covid-19. Sekarang saya mengatakan post Covid-19, tapi saya tidak yakin apakah Covid-19 ini akan hilang secepat yang kita pikirkan. Jadi mungkin itu juga tentang jangka masa dua tahun, bahwa Anda tahu, jika ini tetap seperti ini selama setidaknya dua tahun, Anda tahu, bagaimana kita, bagaimana itu mengubah hidup kita? Dan saya harap panen kami akan bisa memberikan kita penjelasan. Jadi kami memiliki panen yang sangat berbeda, dan saya minta maaf, Rizal, tapi saya pikir saya harus mengajari mereka lagi. Kamu sangat cepat dalam hal itu. Jadi kami memiliki dengan ini, Puan Dr. Samshini, yang sebenarnya adalah Deputi Direktur Jenderal Plan Malaysia. Dan Plan Malaysia pada dasarnya adalah organisasi yang melakukan semua negara peluncuran fisik di seluruh negara. Dia berasal dari universitas yang sangat prestigius, Universitas Kent, Canterbury. Sang prestigius karena itu sama universitas yang saya berasal dari. Dan dia adalah ekspert dalam ekonomi perkembangan, analisis spesial, dan GIS. Dia juga salah satu orang penting dalam formasi Plan Fisik Nasional, yang merupakan dokumen yang menyeluruh tentang semua peluncuran fisik di Malaysia. Terima kasih, Puan. Panen kami selanjutnya adalah Tan Sri Datoh Ahmad Zaidi. Dia sebenarnya salah satu dari sedikit orang yang saya suka berbicara, karena dia memiliki teknologi dalam darahnya, saya pikir. Dan dia adalah presiden pertama Board of Technologists Malaysia. Dan percaya saja atau tidak, dia menghabiskan banyak waktu dengan generasi muda untuk membangun mereka untuk masuk ke dalam teknologi. Dia engineer listrik dari Brighton, dan dia melakukan banyak pekerjaan dalam sektor energi, terutama dalam formasi TMB. Terima kasih, Tan Sri. Panen kami selanjutnya adalah Puan Maymuna Jaffar. Dia bersama Erda, yang berada di Jawa Tengah, yang merupakan Regional Development Authority yang mungkin menghasilkan investasi lebih dari sekitar 300 juta rupiah setahun, 300 miliar rupiah setahun, maaf. Dan dia salah satu orang pertama yang melihat Framework Smart City pada tahun 2012 untuk Iskandar, Malaysia. Dan kami ingin mengetahui lebih banyak tentang apa, bagaimana perjalanan itu berlaku. Dia juga memiliki beberapa kepercayaan yang sangat berbeda dari MIT dalam hal keterwujudan, dan dari Boston. Terima kasih, Puan. Panen kami selanjutnya adalah Inche Arif. Arif adalah CEO dari Serv Technology. Dan dia pada dasarnya adalah startup entrepreneur yang membangun beberapa startup dan pada tahun 2017 dia membangun Serv. Itu adalah App super mobil, dan itu sedikit mendefinisikan cara kita menyertai mobil. Saya tidak akan berbicara terlalu banyak tentang itu, karena saya ingin dia memberi kami lebih banyak tentang ini dan bagaimana itu mempengaruhi lanskap urban. Dan terima kasih, Arif. Dan kami juga memiliki Mr. Pang. Mr. Pang adalah ED dari Palmerai, dan dia cukup pembicara yang terkenal, saya dengar. Saya pikir saya telah melihat Talk Ted, dan saya pikir dia pada dasarnya memiliki teknologi yang sangat menarik dalam sudut keterwujudan, renews, dan juga inisiatif Kampo nganu nol. Dan kami ingin mendengar lebih banyak tentang bagaimana itu bekerja dan apa yang bisa kita lakukan lebih dalam ruang ini. Terima kasih, Mr. Pang. Dan kami memiliki dua pembicara. Salah satunya adalah Mr. Eric Chan, yang merupakan Direktur Residensial TRX Lendlies. Eric pada dasarnya adalah peran finansial dalam compound TRX asli di Kuala Lumpur, yang merupakan perkembangan 70 akar, yang memiliki GDB sekitar 8 miliar. Dan Eric baru-baru ini memulai, diluncurkan secara digital, galeri real estat, dan semua barang-barang itu, yang biasanya Anda perlu melakukannya secara fisik. Jadi kami ingin mengetahui lebih banyak tentang bagaimana dia melakukannya dari sudut digital, apa tantangan-tantangan, dan bagaimana kita bisa melakukan ini sedikit berbeda. Tapi Eric, saya akan membawamu ke sini lebih lama untuk juga mengakhiri sedikit tentang bagaimana sesi panen kami berlaku. Jadi itu adalah panen kami. Saya pikir kita memiliki sesi yang bagus. Sebelum saya mulai dengan pertanyaan kepada panen, saya diberi tahu untuk menetapkan suasana. Dan kami telah melakukan banyak pekerjaan tentang kota smart dan juga dalam hal digital dan Revolusi Industri Keempat, yang sedang berlangsung. Dan saya pikir saya akan melakukan dua hal. Satu adalah untuk menetapkan suasana tentang di mana Malaysia dan Kuala Lumpur secara terkait. utama karena data, saya pikir kami tampaknya kurang banyak data di luar Kuala Lumpur dan kota-kota utama. Dan kemudian saya menetapkan aspek tentang apa yang orang Malaysia menghadapi sebagai tantangan, ya? Dan setiap kali kita menggali ke topik teknologi dan inovasi di lanskap urban, itu benar-benar tentang menyelesaikan masalah, ya? Jika kita tidak menyelesaikan masalah, maka kita tidak seharusnya fokus pada itu. Dan ini pada dasarnya adalah tempat kita sekarang, ya? Dunia dan dalam hal negara-negara yang berbeda dengan post Covid dan apa yang terjadi, saya pikir kita memiliki lebih banyak masalah untuk diselesaikan. Jadi mungkin modelnya tidak begitu banyak model pertumbuhan, ya? Pertumbuhan GDB, tapi itu lebih tentang menyelesaikan masalah dan membuat hidup kita lebih baik, menghilangkan kekayaan, dan pada dasarnya memiliki gaya hidup keterwujudan di dalam lanskap urban. Jadi ada beberapa statistik. Kami terlibat dalam Index Kota Keterwujudan pada tahun 2018, yang diterbitkan oleh Arkades. Dan kami melakukan banyak pekerjaan ekstensif tentang kota dan tiga bagian, manusia, planet, keuntungan. Dan Kuala Lumpur keluar nomor 67 dari rangkaian sekitar 101 negara. Itu sebenarnya berjalan sedikit lebih baik dalam hal sudut keuntungan serta beberapa metrik tentang orang. Dan ini adalah statistik pertama yang ingin saya tunjukkan. Nomor 67 tidak terbaik di kota, ya? Kami bahkan tidak di dalam 50% dari spektrum itu. Jadi untuk menetapkan suasana, saya pikir kita memiliki kompetisi yang berat, ya? Kami memiliki kompetisi yang berat, dan setiap kota ini juga berkembang strategi, polisi, dan program untuk dibangun. Dalam hal teknologi, saya pikir ini mungkin indeks yang saya gunakan jika有人问我在哪里从一个 innovation dan teknologi perspektif. Itu sebenarnya GII, Index Global Innovation. Dan Malaysia di tahun lalu merangkai nomor 35. Yang tidak buruk jika Anda bertanya ke saya. Dan saya pikir ini adalah sesuatu yang akan kita lakukan. Dan saya percaya kita akan meningkatkan skala, dari sudut pandangan saya. Dan Anda melihat negara-negara yang di atas adalah semua negara Eropa dan AS, tentu saja. Singapura nomor delapan. Tapi Anda juga memiliki sudut yang menarik di sini. Cina nomor 14. Dan ini adalah sesuatu yang telah mengkali dalam 10 tahun terakhir dengan sangat keras. Jadi ini adalah negara yang harus dilihat signifikan dan bagaimana kita bisa bekerja dengan negara teknologi juga. Sekarang masalah utama dalam teknologi pada dasarnya adalah tentang infrastruktur, nomor 42. Dan jika Anda melihat output kreatif, nomor 44, ya? Jadi dua titik di sini yang mungkin kita bisa fokus pada. Secara kreatif, sisi itu, dan juga infrastruktur, infrastruktur digital yang membatasi teknologi. Dalam hal kompetitivitas digital, kami nomor 26. Ini adalah dari 63 negara. Dan negara nomor satu adalah AS, nomor dua adalah Singapura. Jadi ini adalah area yang saya percaya pemerintah Malaysia fokus sangat. Kami memiliki beberapa framework baru yang akan keluar di dua bulan berikutnya pada Revolusi Industri Keempat, serta di ekonomi digital. Dan saya percaya kita memiliki banyak hal untuk lakukan di ruang ini juga. Jadi sisi digital, kami 26. Dalam hal inovasi, kami nomor 35. Dan pada kota keterwujudan, berdasarkan apa yang kita pikirkan, nomor 67. Jadi untuk mengacu dari sisi kami, kami melakukan banyak pekerjaan di ruang ini. Dan kami percaya modelnya masih di sekitar tiga bagian, ya? Manusia, planet, keuntungan. Dan kami harus melihat hal-hal dari sudut pandangan sosio-econômis. Jadi lingkungan, re-injinerasi sosial, sisi kemampuan ekonomi. Dan ini adalah segala sesuatu dari melihat, Anda tahu, sedikit fokus pada agroindustri di Malaysia karena kami produksi yang cukup kuat dari minyak dan pohon, dan juga input terkait makanan. Dan dari engineering sosial, saya pikir ada banyak diskusi tentang hukuman mampu, kesehatan, pengaturan kesehatan, reform reform pendidikan. Dan lingkungan, saya pikir ada banyak yang harus dilakukan. Saya percaya kami berada di jalur yang tepat, tapi ini juga area di mana uang dapat dibuat, Anda tahu, dalam menyelesaikan masalah lingkungan. Dan itu adalah cara yang menarik untuk melihatnya, jika Anda memiliki model kapitalisme di mana Anda sebenarnya menyelesaikan CO2. Jadi sedikit tentang Kuala Lumpur. Di sini apa yang kita pikirkan adalah tiga tantangan dari sisi kami. Transportasi publik keluar dengan sangat keras. Dalam hal percepatan internet, itu selalu sesuatu yang orang mengkhawatirkan. Dan kami memiliki jumlah tinggi, saya pikir, regenerasi lele solid, dan tingkat recykling rendah. Ya? Jika secara umum tingkat recykling rendah. Saya pikir itu mulai mungkin dari keluarga juga, dan seterusnya. Tapi nomor lima adalah salah satu yang saya juga ingin melihat apakah panen kami dapat memberikan pandangan. Dan ini pada dasarnya adalah tentang data, ya? Untuk teknologi dan inovasi untuk terjadi, kami membutuhkan data. Dan setiap data saya pikir dikeluarkan di berbagai organisasi. Dan bagaimana kita sebenarnya berbagi lebih banyak data? Itu salah satu hal, ya? Dan sebelum saya mengakhiri sedikit ini, ini adalah survei yang kami lakukan beberapa lama lalu untuk Master Plan Kota Kuala Lumpur. Dan ini adalah masalah yang saat ini diatasi atau dianggap oleh atmosfer urban. Jadi rakyat pada dasarnya berpikir bahwa penjualan harga hukuman adalah masalah utama, ya? Dan jika Anda melihat hal-hal lain seperti congesti kerja, percepatan internet yang rendah, dan seterusnya. Dan saya pikir jika kita melihat teknologi dan inovasi, kita harus fokus pada menyelesaikan masalah ini. Tapi saya ingin mendengar dari panen kami juga, Anda tahu, apa yang Anda pikirkan tentang masalah saat ini, dan di mana itu bisa bergerak? Dan sekali lagi, Anda tahu, kami melakukan survei lain. Ini sekitar tahun setengah lalu, 263 anggota rakyat. Dan pada dasarnya, bagaimana Anda merasa tentang kota Anda? Jadi setengah dari mereka tetap baik, setengah dari mereka mengatakan mereka membutuhkan peningkatan. Dan kerjaan datang dengan sangat keras, tapi mengejutkan lingkungan tidak menjadi hal utama di sini juga. Jadi ini juga mencoba untuk mendapatkan data, mengaturnya, untuk melihat apa yang penting di sana. Dan sementara kita melihat semua statistik ini, saya pikir mungkin indeks terpenting adalah indeks kebahagiaan, seperti yang mereka katakan, kan? Dan saya pikir bagaimana kita mengukur kebahagiaan? Saya pikir kita tidak akan masuk ke dalam itu. Tapi ini sebenarnya adalah sebuah laporan yang diterbitkan pada tahun 2018. Dan kami merangkai nomor 80, ya? Dan saya pikir itu benar-benar tentang bagaimana Anda mendefinisikan itu. Jadi saya pikir bagaimana kita bertanggung jawab dengan kata kebahagiaan ini? Anda tahu, apa artinya itu? Dan bagaimana teknologi, Anda tahu, memantulkan pada itu, dan seterusnya. Dan jika Anda melihat titik terakhir di kanan di sini, Anda tahu, teknologi advanced membuat orang fokus pada ponsel mobile daripada untuk berkomunikasi dengan keluarga. Ini sebenarnya ditemukan dalam laporan. Anda tahu, dan saya tidak tahu, saya memiliki pandangan yang berbeda tentang ini, Anda tahu. Saya pikir ponsel mobile membantu saya banyak dalam bisnis saya sendiri, berkomunikasi dengan, Anda tahu, teman saya di luar negeri dan keluarga. Jadi mungkin kita bisa juga berbicara tentang itu dan melihat bagaimana itu bekerja. Jadi sedikit tentang lanskap, saya memiliki dua slide lebih. Lanskap urban pada dasarnya adalah di sekitar Framework Smart City yang kami coba untuk memasukkan teknologi dan inovasi ke dalamnya. Jadi ini adalah framework kota smart, di mana kami memiliki semua elemen smart dari lingkungan, keamanan publik, ke transport, parkir. Dan pada dasarnya kami ingin bergerak ke kota smart, keterwujudan supaya itu membantu kita dalam hidup sehari-hari. Dan itu terlibat dengan banyak teknologi di luar. Semua dari grid smart, hingga biometrik, hingga drone, hingga melihat kendaraan listrik dan kendaraan autonoma. Dan penggunaan intelektual untuk pada dasarnya membantu kita dalam hal keamanan, dan seterusnya. Jadi saya pikir itu adalah jenis penutup saya. Dan hanya untuk membangunkan Anda semua, saya berpikir, pada pagi sabtu hari Sabtu. Jadi mari kita masuk ke dalam sesi panen. Saya ingin mungkin memulai dengan setiap panen memberi kami sedikit pandangan mereka tentang SDGs, ya? Jadi kami memiliki 17 SDGs di layar panen, panen. Dan kami ingin Anda pilih dua yang Anda pikirkan adalah hal yang paling penting sekarang. hanya untuk menetapkan suasana di sini. Dan kita bisa melakukannya dengan urutan, mulai dengan Dr. Shum.
Baiklah, terima kasih, Mr. Moderator. Selamat pagi, semua orang, dan assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Sebenarnya pagi ini saya merepresentasikan Departemen Perencanaan Kota dan Negara, yang merupakan Plan Malaysia. Dan tentu saja saya juga merepresentasikan peluncur di Malaysia, oke? Dan ketika Anda bertanya kepada kami tentang SDG apa yang saya pilih yang penting untuk saya, sebenarnya semua SDGs penting karena untuk mencapai perkembangan keterwujudan komprehensif atau kami harus memastikan bahwa semua strategi atau tujuan harus dilihat secara holistis. Tapi karena Anda tanya ke saya tentang yang mana saya pilih pagi ini, jadi yang pertama adalah strategi 6. Itu tentang, no, SDG 6, tentang air bersih dan sanitasi, oke? Mengapa saya memilih strategi ini? Karena akses ke air bersih sangat penting. Baru-baru ini kami memiliki kekurangan bahan bahan air, terutama di Slangor. Jadi semua orang, Anda tahu, bergerak ke atas dan turun, dan kemudian air juga. Stoknya tidak ada lagi di meja di supermarket, dan supermarket hyper. Dan kemudian kita harus memastikan bahwa semua orang, bahkan orang miskin dan orang berkaya dan semua kehidupan hidup memiliki akses ke air bersih. Dan bagaimana memastikan bahwa kita memiliki air bersih ini? Untuk memastikan bahwa aktivitas yang terjadi, terutama di tingkat sungai di luar, sebelum titik masukan air harus dikontrol. Dan kita harus memastikan lele tidak langsung ke sungai dan seterusnya, oke? Itu salah satu hal. Dan yang lain adalah tentang sanitasi yang tepat. Sanitasi yang tepat sangat penting untuk memastikan bahwa kita memiliki kota kesehatan, orang-orang kesehatan. Dan juga kita harus memastikan bahwa kita dapat menghentikan kelebihan penyakit untuk memastikan kualitas hidup untuk komunitas di kota. Dan tanpa ketersisian dan juga akan mempengaruhi atau memberikan dampak pada kondisi kesehatan orang-orang. Itu SDG pertama, oke? Yang kedua pasti yang terdekat dengan kita sebagai peluncur adalah SDG 11. Itu tentang kota keterwujudan dan komunitas, oke? Karena kita tahu bahwa tingkat urbanisasi di negara telah mencapai lebih dari 75% oleh yang sebagian besar residen di negara, populasi mereka tinggal di area urban. Dan ada banyak masalah yang kita hadapi sekarang. Dan kota-kota menghadapi banyak tantangan. Demam untuk transportasi seperti apa yang Anda katakan sekarang. Demam untuk ruang untuk melakukan aktivitas ekonomi dan aktivitas aktivitas ekonomi. Demam untuk hukuman ada. Dan kemudian semua hal ini memiliki demam peningkatan hukuman untuk hukuman seperti yang saya katakan, untuk fasilitas komunitas, untuk barang dan jasa lain semakin tinggi dan lebih tinggi. Dan kami yakin bahwa kita dapat mengatasi semua tantangan yang dihadapi melalui urbanisasi, oke? Jadi kita harus memastikan bahwa jasa yang diberikan atau infrastruktur mereka menghadapi semua tekanan ini. that are facing all this pressure being, you know, managed properly to ensure that the communities can get access to good infrastructure and utilities and facilities to get a good quality of life, okay? So that is why when we look at these SDGs, we are trying to solve all the multi, multifaceted problems or issues that planners should look into and urban managers should look into to ensure that the communities are enjoying their life and have a good quality of life in the cities, okay? And then under these SDGs, targets are being set and solutions are being provided. And many local authorities are taking a lot of initiatives to ensure that the initiatives are meeting all the targets that has been set under the two SDGs. And then another one, another reason why I choose these two SDGs is because we've, we've already have a platform to monitor and to measure the level of sustainability in cities. For example, the MUNINET, which is the Malaysian Urban National, Malaysian Urban Rural National Indicators Network for Sustainable Development. Actually, this was a rebranding of the previous MUNINET, which do not have the S at the end of the word MUNINET. When we do the review in two thousand and ten, so we have this, we put the word S to represent sustainable development. And it covers not only for urban areas, but also for rural areas as well. And if you were to see on the board, on the slide there, we can see all the initiatives that have been taken previously by various levels and by planning departments and various agencies in meeting the targets that has been set up under all the SDGs. Actually, most of the targets that have been set up, that is encompassing seven SDGs there, we can see that most of the targets are now have been achieved. And if you were to see under sanitation and clean water, there are about eight of, eight of the targets that have been mentioned under the MUNINET. And then if it is for cities, just now, can you go back to the previous slide? If it is for sustainable cities and communities, nine of ten targets have been measured and monitored by our department. But the, the details data came from all the local authorities who participated in the MUNINET. So we can see the present status of all the performance of cities in terms of sustainable development. And we review, we can see the, the achievement of each of the indicators within the six dimensions of MUNINET. We can see where are they lacking. And then we, they can look into those lack, lacking indicators. Then they can provide new solutions and make new initiatives to ensure that the targets, the targets or the goals for sustainable, sustainable development can be achieved. So that is two, okay? Another one, actually, when the department has actually embarked on this sustainable development long, long time ago, since nineteen nineties, okay? So until today, we have been promoting a lot of concepts to be adopted by various local authorities and also for the industrial players. Especially, we must ensure that the city are all safe. So we encourage or promote the concept of adoption of CPTED, that is Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, okay? And then number two, number two is, we need to optimize the land. We must make sure the land are very scarce. So we need to ensure the space being used are being optimized. Hence, the promotion of the Compact Development and TODs Development comes into picture. The other one, we must identify the high-risk areas. We are talking about disaster risk reduction. So in our planning, we have already also incorporate the identifications of areas which have high risk to disasters, you know? That means they, with the previous history records, with the possibility of people being affected by disasters. So from there, we can know the vulnerability index. And from there, we can get the risk level of each part of the city when we do planning. So we try to avoid activities to occur on the high-risk areas, okay? And the next one, we use technology to solution for open urban challenges. How do we use this? We, we already also embark, embarking on the establishment of our Malaysian Urban Observatory. This is for the exchange of, a platform for exchange of data. And also, it can perform analytics for urban solutions. And then they can give, display maps and tell us information about what the city, the city conditions are. And then also, we are going to attach also the smart cities initiatives and activities into these MUU that we are going to establish. And also, we can do some reportings and monitorings on all the efforts or initiatives that have been taken under the implementation of all the policies and strategies under our National Physical Plan and then under all the structure plans. And also, the implementation actions being taken as being outlined in the local plans and all the special area plans, okay? Apart from that, we must also now try to promote place making, create places for people to convene, to do their activities. And of course, with this COVID-nineteen pandemic, we are supposed to maybe, to ensure that there are social distancing and not the capacity of the area need to be reviewed. And how many people can be at, at one place at one time have to be looked into as well, okay? And then another one is about promoting local authorities to do green initiatives, something like composting, you know, they have urban farming. They have to provide cycle lanes, walkability, you know, all these pedestrian walkways and all. So all these initiatives, the green initiatives have been implemented long time ago. And every year during the World Town Planning Day, we are giving out awards to all the authorities that have performed well in these green initiatives. I think for the first session, that's about all, thank you.
Thank you, Pon. So that's, that's very, very exciting information, if, if I were to say. I think, I think the MUNINET is something that not many people are aware of. And, and I do suggest you go and Google it and have a look at it, especially for planners, especially for local and state and, and district level planning. There's, there's a lot of data there which, which we use a lot in, in our work. Thank you, Pon. You've, you've exceeded a bit of the time, but it's okay. You're, you're from my university, so it's fine. So can we have the SDG slides back on screen? Tansri, if, if I could ask you, out of the seventeen SDGs, what, what do you think are two of the most relevant right now, in, in your opinion?
Well, perhaps big the most in the room, I would like to tell a story. I went to England in nineteen sixty-one, I think before many of you were born. And in nineteen sixty-one, what troubled me was how dirty London was. And consequently, one of the things that I noticed was that the River Thames was like mud plus tar, because it was black in color and nothing can really live in it. And it was stinking. So much so that the Members of Parliament, because the Westminster is just close by, had to stop a session of parliamentary discussions because of the stench, they couldn't bear it anymore. All this happened in nineteen sixty-one. And then they passed a resolution and so on to take action on this problem. Lo and behold, in nineteen seventy-three, twelve days later, I had a chance to go back to UK. And I found that the water was clean, Thames. And another part of it was that the buildings, which was black, I thought that the Parliamentary House was painted black. It was not painted black. I thought Buckingham Palace was painted black. It was not painted black. And so were the railway stations. They were actually soot, coal soot from the coal fire, from the houses that settled on the building. But in nineteen seventy-three, then we actually saw the true color of all those glorious buildings of yesteryear. So the point that I'm making here is actually it's SDG number fourteen. That is, there is life below Thames, there is life in the water, but it has to be preserved. And what is more important, I feel, is that it can be done. Our rivers are still dirty. I think we have improved quite a lot in terms of the town, in terms of the decoration, and the flowers can grow and so on, although some of them were stolen. But generally, I think our cities, Kuala Lumpur and so on, we can be very proud of. But the rivers are still shocking. That is fourteen. Number fifteen in the second one, that I felt very important about. What is interesting is that we cannot really control the atmosphere as such. We had the problem of Jeru, remember? It is no fault of ours, at least we don't claim it is to be our fault, although maybe our entrepreneurs have done it. But we can't control it, nor can other ASEAN countries around us, including Singapore and Thailand and so on, were suffering from the haze. Now, this requires diplomacy. This requires science diplomacy, because it goes beyond the boundary. And the haze, there's no respect of people, the country boundary. That will come to me to SDG number fifteen, life on the end. Because we know it can be improved. We know that China, because of the, they were hosting the Olympics and they were able to stop all the factories for a couple of weeks. And you could see the skies from Beijing and so on. So my take on it is that it is not so much the policies. I think we have a lot of policies in Malaysia. But it is about implementation and enforcement. And I feel that that is something that we can do something about, Insha Allah. Thank you.
So we'll, we'll definitely come back to you on, on how do we improve these implementations of policies? Thank you, that was very, I, I didn't expect that from you, but it gives me a different view. Nobody, I've, I've asked this question to many people and, and in many sessions and very few have chosen fourteen and fifteen. But I think I'm gonna pick those the next time someone asks me that. So Arif, if, if we could get your views on the SDGs?
All right, thank you, Yurish, and good morning and Assalamualaikum everyone. So basically, just, I would like to introduce, introduce my, my company. Like, it is named SURF with the purpose of actually to serve people. So basically, how do we serve people is by improving everyone's life through innovation and technology, right? So all of our, even though that we are focusing on mobility technology and all that, but all of our solution, product, our movement and all, it has to be all about people. It has to be, if we say digital, it's all about digital inclusion. If we say financial, it's all about financial inclusion. It's about looping in or involving everyone to come together, right? To build a better future as an ecosystem, right? So if, I would like to choose, right? If, if it is the most important, I think every of the seventeen are all important, right? Because it's kind of interconnected and interrelated with each other, right? But if the one that close to, to my heart and then what, what I've been working on, right? And, and still working on it every day, even not by myself, but also of my company, is, the first one is number one, right? There, there no poverty, right? So what we've been doing in our company at SURF, at first, and, and what we've been focusing is about the micro economy. Not economic growth as in the whole, right? But the micro economy. What we've been doing, our focus of this year, we call it as retaliations, right? Retaliation means how do we reconstruct the auto-retail, yeah? As worst as it can get from the impact of the COVID-nineteen nowadays, right? Most of them cannot run the shops for a couple of months and all that. Everyone are impacted. So the only way to get them out at first is we started from digitalizing them, right? So we provide, we even provide free solutions for all these merchant, automotive merchants, right? Why we do, we do, why did we choose automotive? Because automotive industry or mobility industry is the one that have the most keluhan among the people, right? Everything are manual, handwritten, chongteng, chongteng, being charged more and all that. So there's a big gap and misunderstanding between the people themselves and the people that manage that particular, that, that doing, entrepreneurs that, that doing, provide that particular services. So how do we go about it? We go digital, we provide even free solution so that we can include everyone to come in, right? That's why however we move in term of business model and all, we don't want to go subscription. We don't want to go high-end premium and all that, because if you go high-end, it's not about inclusion at all. So we want to loop everyone in and then we go other kind of innovation of business model to make it, to, to make it sustainable. So that how we go about it, about the poverty. And also, how we go about technology innovation, it's not just about building the technology itself. But how do empower, technology is a platform and enabler. But how do we look in other kind of solutions? As, as in, the first of our pillars, informations. How do we use from all this record-keeping, all being digital data and all that? How do we give better insights for all these small businesses to actually understand better of the industries and then make decision better? But it is not an easy work, right? So because we need to go a lot of ground activities, we do webinar and all to educate them to go digital. And from there, we can improve. And then another, another pillar that we, we do, we are doing is financials, financials, financial, financial hub. So basically, how, how our financial institutions work, right? It is just not fit or suitable for all these small businesses. Because most of them don't even have, some of them don't even have bank account. Everything is handled by cash, even company, bawa foko and all that. We face all of this kind of businesses around in Malaysia. So how do we go financial? We partner up with financial institutions, right? Provided a platform. So we give out a Bantuan Billion, a supply assistance program, by not required all these small businesses to submit anything, right? They don't have to submit bank account, they don't have to submit accounting management account or audit report and all. So it is being evaluated by the data that we have been tracking. How many footfalls is coming to the shops, right? How many, how much is transaction, ticket size, transaction per week and all that? From all that data we kept, we, we have been keeping and, and tracking, right? So we kind of evaluate their credit worth in it. So, so we just released, we just rolled this out recently, this couple of one or two months, right? And then test it out. And then we're seeing a lot of take-up from, from all these small businesses. So no poverty is part of, is our agenda, right? And then I would like to also choose the last one, the partnership for the goals, right? Because this is the, one of the hardest part, I think, I think in the seventeen. It's about bringing all the stakeholders, right? Everyone has a, need to be win-win situation and all that. And then if you want to include government, they have their own agenda. Businesses, they have their own agenda, even the people, they have their own agenda. So how do we kind of complementing and then find a sweet spot? And for us to work together and we can march forward to solve all these kind of problems. So just, I would like to share some of the, our, our, our projects in our company. One of it is that we are also into autonomous, autonomous vehicles ecosystem. But it's not for on the road, means moving around on the road, on the, on the normal road as the people use. But we are looking into more captive environment, working with universities in campus, in cities, like located cities. So how do we move a shuttle and all that? And then recently, last Monday, so we just rolled out another, another initiative, which is the Low Carbon Initiative with Urbanist, partner with Urbanist, to get people to go, to go, to get active and also can do carbon saving, also can track carbon saving by, by, by going active. So from having all this agenda together, right? So we are also empowering all these solutions into one of our, I would say, intelligent tech, ah, technology. So we are also empowering all these solutions into one of our, I would say, intelligent technology platform at the back. So all this data mapping, data analytics and all, so we are looking into democratizing it better, so that, because I think Girish mentioned about data and everything, right? The lack thing about, about our, I think our ecosystem now is about the accessibility and also availability of that data, right? Everyone is trying to go create solution by blindly created, then everyone has to, has to go for data, means to acquire that data by themselves. So we don't have that open data platform. So we're looking to become, to have that solution, at least we can share. Even in automotive, we are working with an agency to kind of have that data mapping solution. So this is kind of still early in the beginning, but we are moving into that, so that we can share it. Thank you.
Thank you, very exciting. We, we'll come back to you a bit more on how you think we could use, get the data openness done faster, yeah? Puan Maimunna, what's your view?
Okay, first of all, thank you for inviting me to share my work down south in Iskandar, Malaysia. And I think as an economic region, we always feels that economic growth and decent work shall be our first priority in moving or driving the economy. So in two zero six, when we started Iskandar, Malaysia, we talked about building the foundation, we talked about preparing the action plan and putting in the right infrastructure to drive economy as well as to give a quality of life for our community. And I think in the second phase of our development, we talked about sustainability, so giving the basic foundation, and then we talked about sustainability, how the people, the businesses, the stakeholder should actually grasp the idea of sustainability, so that they know how to live, to work, to recreate and do business in Iskandar, Malaysia. So currently, we are in the third phase, so we are supposed to be in maturity in year twenty twenty five. We embark on a journey where we move into innovation and sustaining the sustainability. So when we talk about the economic growth, we see that embarking and technology can actually help us to accelerate our vision to become an international metropolis, sustainable metropolis of international standing, whereby in two zero one two, we've been invited actually by my, by the Prime Minister Office, to actually look at smart city framework. Because I think as everyone knows, in year twenty eleven, Germany actually launched their IR four point zero campaign. And through deliberation of subject matter as put all over the world, we've been invited to look at what will be the best smart city framework that can be actually grabbed by Malaysia. So at that time, of course, many cities, many countries like Korea and Japan has actually embarked on, as we know, the Ubiquitous City. But for Malaysia, we feels that the sixth dimension, which also involves smart people and smart living, needs to be given focus. So for us, technology or smart city is about how can we use technology and innovation as a tool or enabler to accelerate our Iskandar, Malaysia vision? Because at the same time, we find that economic growth can actually be achieved through higher levels of productivity, you know, through technology, innovation. And we are also looking at digital economy that covers entrepreneurship on creation of high income level. So the decent work and challenge for Iskandar, Malaysia, not only providing decent work, but how we can actually provide high income level and to be making Johor Baru and Visi Niti as competitive to Kuala Lumpur. I think you look at competitive city, and I think Malaysia is in the right track, because we also looking at secondary city to provide the GDP, the investment to Malaysia. So when we embark on digital economy, we work together with our partners, and we promote startups like Johor Star, Magix. And through our partner, we actually formed the first Malaysia blockchain village. So I think what is a smart city if you cannot measure, if you cannot collect the data, integrate the data? So therefore, in year two zero one six, we actually develop our Iskandar, Malaysia urban observatory. And it's actually an important ecosystem for a smart city. I think Moderator also mentioned just now about data, and I think we talk about how we can actually collect data. But importantly, when we collect data, we need to analyze, we need to use it to make it policies and an informed decision. And the second SDG is actually on SDG seven, affordable and clean energy. And actually, when we look at clean energy, perhaps Malaysia has not have any issue on it, except our energy is still on fossil fuel. So this is something that Malaysia needs to look at. But why SDG seven is important? We also embark on our low-carbon city blueprint, and we have actually committed to reduce carbon emission by fifty percent from our twenty ten baseline come twenty twenty five. And I think to tell you the truth, we've been monitoring our CO, our CO two emission, we only managed to reduce seventeen percent when we first started two zero one two. So there's a lot of work to do, but from our action plan and roadmap, we projected actually by year twenty twenty five, because we are an economic-driven region. Our electricity will actually rise threefold, so actually that's a lot. And when we look at it, we have actually put a target of energy mix of thirty seven of electric supply via renewable energy and twelve percent by energy efficiency. So in our region, we really focus on how to actually reduce carbon emission by focusing on clean energy. That's what we are doing at the moment. And to move towards this, we have also agreed to become UN Escape Partner under SDG seven, to revisit our targets, to provide a roadmap, and also doing a reporting for SDG seven at a global level. So there's, those are the two SDG that we are focusing on at the moment.
Thank you. I think we'd love to hear more about the blockchain village. I think that that is something that not many people have put those two words together and come up with something later. Mr. Pang, what about you? Can you, can you tell us your views on two of the SDGs?
Perhaps the grand review. Good morning and Assalamualaikum, I'm Jabar Gitan Sri, as team panelist, and thank you, Mr. Moderator. I will keep my answer very simple and very short, but before that, allow me to share something about the equipment that we have carried by Palmarai. Palmarai is the name of the company. Asher is the name of the technology, and the name gives the direct representative of what it does, which is turns things into ash. And in doing that, the Asher uses zero fuel, no diesel, no petrol, no gas, no electricity. It's fully complied to the US EPA standards, and recently, we have been certified by Myhijang, by Green Tech Malaysia. So it is a hundred percent homegrown technology, invented, developed and manufactured in Malaysia. So I'm proud to say this is, we are now in fourteen countries, including the likes of Australia, Singapore, Vietnam, Cambodia, Philippines, Indonesia, St. Lucia, Nigeria. I have not even heard of St. Lucia before, until they came and met us and purchased twenty units of it. So my answer to your questions, the most, two most important SDGs, I think all of them are fairly important, equally important. But if we cut away the frills, the noise, the whistles and bangs and bells, for me personally, the two most fundamental and most basic SDG that is overarching and also supporting the rest of the SDGs will be SDG one and SDG eleven. The reason I chose these, both these SDGs is because they are holistic, widespread, widespread spanning in a larger group, in a larger community, they are inclusive. And the ripple effect of achieving the goals and targets under SDG one and SDG eleven travels far, covers other SDGs as well. If we are not able to have clean drains and running flowing water in our drains, I don't think we deserve to speak on decent work and economic growth. If we can't even properly dispose waste, why are we talking about gender equality? So by, by, by building SDG one and eleven as the building blocks, as the fundamental to other SDGs, it creates a greater opportunity, it creates a greater empowerment for the people, for the rocket, for the country, and also the human race as a whole, to evolve and to achieve the targets under all the other SDGs. So in short, for me, SDG one and SDG eleven establish the platform for us to elevate and also to leapfrog.
Thank you, that was very short. So maybe, can I give you another minute to tell us more about the company? I, I didn't get the ash part, maybe, maybe educate me, please.
Well, first and foremost, Mr. Moderator, I thank you for using the word renowned speaker instead of infamous speaker. Well, we, the company was started back in twenty eighteen. Of course, the technology was started much earlier, the first prototype came out in twenty ten. The inventor is a manufacturing partner of mine now. The first commercial unit went out in twenty sixteen, and Jingjingjeng, not Malaysia, went out to Indonesia, the first commercial unit. It was grew, it was bought by a warehouse hypermarket company, wanted to manage and dispose their own waste on premise. See, the Asher is a small unique equipment, it fits easily into any urban design refuse room in today's world. If you can park a vehicle, a van, you can park the Asher, right? It's able, they are able to, the capacities are designed to be two ton, two and a half ton and four ton of capacity per day, per site, per unit. Most interest, more interestingly, the two ton, so the two ton is solar powered. When I said, when I said earlier, it doesn't require any diesel, petrol, gas or accelerants, external energy for heat treatment process, because the heat treatment process is the one that's turning the material, organic or inorganic, to ash. And the ash that is produced, the residue here is reduced from its original form to merely a four percent residue. So I'll give you an example, if you put it a one hundred kilo of waste into the Asher, you will be left with four percent of, four kilos of ash. And this ash, unlike what you find in incinerator or waste to energy plant or a mini incinerator, this ash are non-hazardous, inane and non-toxic, and can immediately be repurposed as soil conditioner. And in fact, it can also be a filler for construction materials, for road makings, bricks, interlocking bricks for gardens, for pathways, for park halls. In India, one of the temple that is using the Asher to treat the waste from the ritual, the bananas, the coconuts, the flowers and fruits, the ash is used to make sand bricks to repair the temples itself.
Very interesting. We'll come back a bit more to you, and I've got a few more questions for you. Eric, can, can you tell us your views on, on the SDGs?
Thank you, thank you, Girish, and thank you to my fellow panel members. Obviously, very distinguished group, so I, I'm not a sustainability guy, so just don't ask me the hard question, I'm just a dumb developer in the room. So just, just, just really quickly introducing land lease, I mean, this is meant to be a joke. I mean, in, in land lease, you know, sustainability is our DNA, and other than that is safety. And really, you know, this whole education around sustainability started for me ten years ago when I first joined the business. So a little bit about land lease, we are a company that is delivering, we are state globally, we are in twenty one cities, and we have about three hundred and fifty billion ringgit of pipeline under development. And, and, and we, we are very much into the innovation space on what we can do and creating the best places. So a couple of things, you know, our, our sustainability framework, you know, is quite simple. We actually have a presentation, but it's okay, I'll just walk you guys through really quickly. So we are all about sustainable economic growth, alright? Community being number two, and number three, you know, healthy people, you know, and obviously climate change. So what we are here for, you know, we've been here in Malaysia relatively new as a developer, and when I, when I, and then when I first came back to Malaysia for this job, we've land lease in different parts of the world and been involved in different project, is that we're in this very exciting project called TRX Residences. It's a seventy acre development right in, in the city. So most of us who've been on Jalan Tun Raza would have experienced the gem. I'm sorry, we're just trying to make the place a little bit better, you know, doing a little bit of MRT work and all that stuff, we're all trying our best. So just, just based on that, you know, I think our SDG, obviously, you know, with that, you know, is number eleven, sustainable cities and communities. When I first started on the project six years ago, on a vision on how we're gonna do this, this project, there's two sentences that I always remember, that is quite, you know, an eye-opener for me at that time. It's what we call casual collision, alright? So a lot of people in the city, if you go to the city today, I used to live right on Jalan Kaping, we don't see our neighbors, even if we do, you know, people talk about private lobbies and stuff. But here, I think where we want to develop is casual collision, where people run at each other, say hi. And I think in this very exciting project that we have, which has a ten-acre park, an office building, market lane, which we're trying to do to create, to, to, to allow local entrepreneurs to thrive, obviously, office building and hotel, all within walking proximity, you know, I think, I think there's an opportunity there. And I think Dr. Shama Sauni talked about public transportation. And I also think that, you know, our, our location being seventy meters away from Malaysia's largest and only MRT station, I think that, that, that creates big, 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 big opportunity, right? So also moving back to Malaysia and having living abroad for a while, you know, a lot of times, the question is, what you do for your weekend? A lot of Malaysians will talk about visiting relatives and stuff, going here to eat, all that kind of stuff. If you talk to an expert, which I work a lot with, I've been driving, you know, to them, driving is a big part of their weekend. So I think there's a big opportunity to change that with what we're doing in the city. And then the other one is number thirteen, climate action, right? I think, just to give you some data here, you know, I think being able to deliver globally also, you know, we have some information. I think the built environment, our industry creates thirty-six percent of global energy use, thirty-nine percent of global greenhouse gases, and fifty percent, we use up to fifty percent of the worst natural resources. And I think we are committed as a company to a one point five degree climate change, you know? And, and that's what we're committed to as a company, and by twenty forty, you know, all through our supply chain, we are, we want absolute zero, you know, carbon footprint. So that's what we are committed to as a company. So for us, you know, again, SDG eleven and thirteen.
Thank you. So, so it's interesting, I think as, as the developer on the panel, I think we can ask him more serious questions and put him on the spot a bit later. So, so we've, we've gone through the introduction of the panelists, just to get a feel of where they're coming from. I think the first observation is very diverse views you can see from individuals. And, and I think maybe this is the challenge, that when you're looking at technology and innovation and trying to influence public policy or even private sector capital spend, you have diverse views, yeah? And, and, and I, I think the more we discuss this, I think it's very important, because not everybody thinks the same, and that, that's where the complications happen. So let's start with, we, we call So let's start with, we, we call it two rounds and then we'll go into a, a, a sort of a summation session where I'll bring Lisa on stage. So we've got, we've got essentially about twenty-five minutes to, to, to go through the two rounds. I'll, I'll go through one question to each of the panelists, if, if you don't mind, and limit your responses in maybe about three to four minutes. So the first round is around the role of technology innovation as an engine for social prosperity. And, and when we mean social prosperity, we're talking about, you know, uplifting the lives of the rakyat and also making it an easier, better, happier place, yeah? So we'll start with Incha Arif. Could you, could you tell us a bit about, you talked a lot about the micro space, yeah? And, and how you're helping them with giving them the unbankable, yeah? The unbankable space and so on. Maybe if you could sort of answer this question in that angle with also your, your, you mentioned something about a free solution, yeah? And, and how did that actually impact the lives of the rakyat from a technology perspective?
Right. So thank you, Moderator. So like, like I shared earlier about how do we empower all these unbankable or micro businesses, right? By providing a digital solutions. First of all, when we talk about all this data law and everything, right? The, the main point of, of data is before we do the analytics, before we do the, the whole experience and everything, is about the strategy of the data itself. How do we track all this? And how do we show to them in the, in, in, in a way that they can understand? And then they, they can, they can make a decision, a better decision for the company. And another one, how do we use all this transaction data and everything so that they themselves can be bankable in, in another way? Not with the current way of the bank doing things, right? So this is, this is one, one of the point. And then into, into the future, how do these micro businesses projects, let's say, some insights about maybe aftermarket business, right? So maybe they are touching an area, but where the, in terms of economics, the number is not as much, where the, the smaller percentage of people are playing with it, but the, the, the economics value are higher. So how do we slowly get them, get them the insight so that they can maybe shift a bit, iterate or pivot a bit their businesses to go in, into a better, better, better direction, right? But in term of how do we improve the life of the rakyat? So having said all this digital empowerment of, of all these micro businesses, but the way we position our, our, our solutions is always about a, a platform of two, of two users, of two customers, right? It's not just about the micro businesses, but also about the user, the end user themselves, right? The one earth that maybe we don't have a, a business, but we are using the, the, the solution. We are using the, 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 the offer, the offerings, right? So how do we connect? How do we become the intermediaries between of these two? And then try to solve the, the communication between these two. Some of it, let's say, when, when you go, when we went to, into automotive, right? The, the language between the, the users, right? And, and, and the businesses are all like, the I am take means, means different, totally different, different language, right? One is talking in different language, one is talking in different language. So basically, language is not means English, B M or, or Mandarin, right? But, but, but the language, yeah, it's not understandable, right? So I just want to send this, but you need to do something like this last. So a lot of, of this miscommunication makes the industry become not trustworthy and also lack of transparency. So we improve into that. So by giving the power to the users as well, for the businesses, yeah, they can track all these informations, transactions, user data, right? User information so that they can, they can, they can do a better relationship with the, the customers and all that. But to the user themselves, how do empower them, right, through these relations? So it's about trackability or accessibility, traceability of whatever they have did in the physical life. They can also trace it in the digital, their digital platform. So this is also to answer what, what you reached, highlighted, addressed about how the technology bring something like, how was the word just now? So people go into the mobile, right, more than, than the real life. So how do we position our solution? It's all about a twin, right, is about two, yeah? So how do we have our life, right, also into the, into the digital? But everything, anything that we go, we do at digital is reflecting what we do in our real life. So you maintain your vehicle well, and then your vehicle in, in the digital, we call it as digital asset. Not owning it in, in physical, also in digital. And owning your life, also like active life, the one that we launched. Having yourself a walking and everything, right? But you can also trace it back in your digital life and get your carbon, carbon, carbon saving and all that being trackable all into that. So that, that's what we're trying to do. Means a, a twin of your, of yourself, but in your digital. So that whatever you do in your life, you can track, track it back. Whatever you want to achieve in the digital world, you're doing something in your real life. So this is how we try to position, position things in our company.
Thank you. So how, so how does the business work at Surf? I, I get onto an app and I, and I click a few buttons and somebody comes to my house to service my car?
It can be either way around for that. We, we call it as vehicle super app. It's really define the whole experience, right? So basically, some people think that ownership is about when you want to buy a, a new vehicle, then, then that's ownership, but do you really own it, right? At Surf, vehicle ownership is about the full lifecycle. Means from the moment you're trying to acquire, you buy, you check the car, and then, and then you own it. We treat every vehicle as they have their own persona in, in the app, right? Their own profile, record keeping, whatever. So we digitalize the service book as well. The service book that in your, in your dashboard, that you never look into it, we make it in the digital and then we make it understandable. So in an interactive way, like all have got meter, green, red, yellow, means green means your, your vehicle is good and all that. And it's not just the providers come to you. You can also go to the providers. But we make it all in digital, means you can, you can do booking, you can pay contactless payment, digital invoicing receipt that have been done all manual. You will never understand what's the something about, you just understand the number, right? Few thousand, something, few thousand in the bottom. So we make it digital so that you understand. So it has to be, the price should be there before any confirmation. Sometimes you just send your vehicle and suddenly you just get the bill and you need to pay it. If not, your vehicle cannot, you cannot take your car back, right? So we have all this timestamp of, of acceptance of quotations, invoice, digital payment and all that. So that it is trackable and then we want the flow of the business is still there, legally there, right? Means the business is running legally, means compliance to the, to regulatory. But without having the need to all these small businesses to go all these mafai, means, means all this, all this, all this hardness, like all this hurdle, right? So they don't have to do all this accounting, bookkeeping by themselves, but it is all in, in digital. So that's how we do it.
Wonderful. So it's, so it's essentially a lifelong data set, right? That, that goes on and lifecycle costing and all of that. Great. Mr. Pang, can I come back to you on your question, which is essentially around the main challenges faced in implementation of technology, innovation and technology in cities, maybe reflecting on your, your own product and Malaysia maybe? And, and also if you could tell us why, why did they go to Indonesia first and not Malaysia? And how, how could we change that?
Well, you really put me on the spot that. I, I think the, the, over the past few years, the key challenges facing by my company with regard to introducing and also getting, getting this information of this piece technology out there, and the responses, the feedback and the repercussion that, that came back, I would summarize that as the lack of courage, the lack of social will and political will in wanting to do the right thing for processes, for, for mother nature, for cost benefit, for environmental protections. There are a lot of protectionism of self-interest and also personal agenda in, in, in the areas, be it government or non-government or even, even nonprofit organizations. It is the same. It is the same fundamental underlying responses that we did receive. Corporate captains, businesses, they are obsessed with return on investment, profitability versus the valuing against responsibility, their responsibility for the environment in doing their business. There's also, it's, they, 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 for, for me, there's no ROI on sustainability. There's no ROI on being green. But of course, there, there are also, there, there will be element of cost benefits, practicality and also being realistic in, in implementing something new, a new system, new solution or new technology. But what I'm saying is the psyche, the immediate response, it's always, what's my return on investment? What is the profitability here? What, how much can be saved, right? And, but, but lacking the understanding and also the valuation for what they have done to mother earth in the process of doing their business and also what are they paying forward for the future generation? The, the, in, in Malaysia generally, as compared, because we have gone to many countries, and in Malaysia generally, the, one of the very pervasive elements that we receive is the, the lacking of in the culture for change, right? We, 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 we are rather stubborn. We are rather remain stagnant in the glory olden days. And, and at times, we over glorify with what we have done, right? And, and shutting ourselves from accepting new, new information, new knowledge. I think it is very important that for all of us, even I think believe Tan Sri himself, until today, he is unlearning and relearning, right? To, to grasp and capture and understand and appreciate new information, new knowledge, new discovery. And, and we, and because of that, it's, 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 it makes it, it makes it hard for government agencies, political leaders, government servants or even corporate captains to adopt a new approach, a new, a new disruptive implementation in their way of doing. And many a times, the excuses is they don't wanna rock the boat. They don't wanna upset the rakyat. Things are going good, status quo is going good. Let's not, let's not disrupt that. And, and another, another very suddening point is for, for Malaysia in particular, for Malaysian in particular, we look upon foreign technology. When, when we, within the country itself, there are so many technologies like Arif himself, right? It's homegrown. And, and if, if, if you, if I may say this, the run flat tires technology was not invented by Germans. It was by Malaysian and it was sold to a, a German company, which was declined by a local company before it was sold to abroad. So we, we, we glorify, we look upon, we look up to foreign technology, which I disagree because we have been Malaysians, multi-racial, multi-races. We are brilliant, genius people. Combined, we can do wonders and can change the world. And, and if foreign technologies is that good, I give you a very, a very good point to ponder. Twenty nineteen, we are, the whole world knows Malaysia as the rubbish bin of the world. All plastic waste were dumped in Malaysia after China shut down its borders to all these imported plastics, right? So, and then in, in, and in Malaysia itself, we are receiving tons and tons of proposal of equipments, technology from Korea, Sweden, Japan, Germany, and God knows which other countries that can, oh, do these plastics, turn to, turn it into fuel and then we can recycle, upcycle the plastic and it doing something that's more valuable downstream, et cetera, right? Now, the question is, where did this plastic came from? If these plastics can really work and this, if this equipment and technology can really work from where they came from, this plastic waste shouldn't be here. It would be processed and turned into fuel, turned into something that's valuable in the origin country. So, and why are we continuing, looking at reviewing all this? And yet we know this equipments and this technology, foreign technologies are way, way more expensive. It's not acclimatized to our, our type of ways and our type of environment. And we continue to explore and, and, and continue to discredit local inventors, local innovators.
Thank you. So that's, that's quite a bit there. Tan, Tan Sri, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and see if you could answer some of that things around the change in a while, in a while. Give you a bit of a stop. I think, I think you, you've, you've, there's something there. And we should, we should try and look at the, you know, the last part, Lisa, you know, on, on trying to look at this whole thing about change, yeah? And I mean, we, we've changed the government, what, two, three times in the last three years? And there's two prime ministers this year, you know, do we really want change? You know, I think that's the real problem here. Not easy question to answer, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna lean on the, the elders here to try and guide us. Before that, can, can I just go into, Eric? I think we, we had a question for you and I think it is disappeared. Yeah, oh, there it is. You, you've recently looked at trying to launch a, a massive residential set of units at, at probably very premium prices as well, very great aid development. How, how did you go about this from a digital and technology point of view? And what were the challenges that you, you could convert into a, a sort of like, what do we do next and how do we do this better from in the build environment?
So I think with Mr. Pang there, I think, again, change, right? I think we, we live in a world of constant change. And I think where, where our, our organization is and what we're very big on is learning agility, right? I still remember, we, we had a few previews on the project. We did extremely well and that's after we have received the approval of APDL from KPKT. And we, we did a few previews and, and we were doing very well right up to Chinese New Year this year. And we were planning for a one thousand person party for people from around the world. And for your information, land lease has lawyer clients of fifteen thousand to twenty thousand people, of which eighty to ninety percent of them are in Asia, right? And, and they are following our project. And very often, we have sold our projects in, in UK, in Australia, and even in Milan to, to Malaysians and Singaporeans and different parts of Asia. And we never actually saw an Asian project to Asian clients before. So we've done very well. And everything came to a stop on March eighteenth, the day of the MCO lockdown. So very, very quickly, the team and I got together and said, hey, what, what should we be doing? And, and people start having webinars and stuff like that. And we came up with this very cool idea of turning an event online, right? And, and, and we've done quite well, you know? For those of you guys who are interested in checking it out is TRXresidences.my/digitallaunch. You have seen us on, on the papers, heard us in the radio and some news as well. So what, what we have done there is to make sure that our clients get to understand our project in a safe environment, all right? That's, that's the most important thing to us. I mean, we want to sell units. Obviously, we are, we, we were very commercially driven. But I would say that, you know, buying a real estate investment is not essential business to the sense of worth risking your life. But at the same time, we have had got many, many people who are interested and they can't travel, you know, people who cannot sign their SPAs and stuff like that. So not only have we created a launch plat- So, not only have we created a launch platform, before that, we have five or six webinars in various languages leading up to that. And, and, and those of you who have been to our gallery would have seen that we, we never talk just about the project in line with building smart community, and building the community itself and how we can contribute to K R. We always talk about the country, we're very Malaysian proud, number one. We have lots of, almost a ninety-five percent Malaysian team on, on the residential side. And also, you know, we really want to be able to show that, you know, this is not just about selling units, it's about bringing people on, on an education. So, we've done that quite successfully. And the next step is really, you know, again, I know people want to get in line, you know, want to, want to feel the buzz in buying a property. But I think there are many, many other ways to do it.
Thank you. So, we have to keep reinventing ourselves. So, let's move into round two, which is essentially around current and future technological innovations for urbanization issues. I'm gonna ask Dr. Samshini if you could give us about two, three minutes around, how do you think technology innovation can facilitate greater inclusion around cities? I think let's talk about the inclusion before going into some of the other aspects.
Okay, thank you. Actually, what most important in planning, especially when we want to include all walks of life into making plans or to predict what kind of development or activities to be taken in the future in cities, is actually about information, okay? So, the information can be unified if we, we develop a platform. Say, for example, we develop the MUO, that is the Malaysian Urban Observatory. So, that is where we can exchange ideas, and then from various agencies, and from the people as well. You know, when we established the MUO in the future, based on the framework that we have already developed, finalized. And then, people can come in and give their views and their perspectives about what they want in the future, and what are the issues they are facing. And then, from there on, during planning process, we can put these inputs together, and we try to rationalize what kind of proposals for development that we can put on the plan, on the plan, and to meet the demand of the people. And previously, when we want to gather information, we have to ensure that we have to target certain groups of people, and then we have to do face-to-face interviews and all. But now, with technology, we'll be able to allow people to get access, to give information through online surveys, through online participation, through apps. You know, say, for example, when we draw up the local plans for areas or cities, we have the apps there, and people can come in and give their objections to any proposals that we have put in the plan, okay? And also, with technology, we can ensure that when we draw or design or shape the cities, we, we can do some scenario building or simulation of the scenario that we are going to have in the future, if we were to give some emphasis on, say, for example, environment, another one on transportation, another one on maybe the human-centric development for economic growth and all. So, when we see all this, we can predict or simulate the scenarios. What will it be in the future if we were to take these steps? If not, what will happen, you know? So, the what-if questions will come in, into picture. So, technology, actually, innovation, will give us the, will facilitate us or enable us to get more information and to make a decision support system, especially when it involves a multi-sectoral approach in planning. And we can get informations not only from the people, from all walks of life. It can be all those OKUs, what we call it, the disabled, the ones from the women groups, from the marginalized groups, from the urban communities that lives in various neighborhoods, to give their input in planning. And then also, technology, in a way, when it, when you talk about inclusion, we have to think about the people that want to own the plans, you know? If they don't provide us with information, and the plans are being done for them, not with them, so we need to do the plans with them instead, you know? So, we have to give the platform for them to get involved and participate. So, with the technology, people can participate more, and wider or greater reach-out activities can be done. So, that is one of the most important thing that can help planning process, and also to ensure the proposals that are put can be realized and practicable. Thank you.
Sure. I'm, I'm, I'm very happy we're in very, and in Malaysia right now, with, with you in Plan Malaysia. Great. Can we now go to Puan Maymuna? I think before you answer that question very quickly, can you tell us a bit about the blockchain village?
Yeah, okay. So, for the blockchain village, this is actually a platform, and it is actually driven by Iskandar Investment Barat. So, this is where actually they integrate the four key strategy to actually look at how blockchain can be escalated in Malaysia itself. So, when we look into it, actually, there are things like policy, talent, infrastructure that needs to be enhanced in order for Malaysia to fast-track in this new technology of blockchain. But at the same time, I think we're also looking at the PDPA, how it can actually be revisited and look at this advance of digital technology so that everybody can be protected by this blockchain. Or do I have to answer to that?
Yes, yes.
So, I, I want to actually address the word change just now. And I think, interestingly, you put there during post-COVID nineteen. So, I think all of you must agree with me that COVID nineteen has been said to actually catalyst of change for innovation, especially digital. And, and I also believe that COVID nineteen has actually become an impetus for government to deeply, seriously look at internet connectivity, yeah? So, actually, COVID nineteen has actually not only disrupt our health, it also has disrupt our economy and lifestyle. So, I think whether we like it or not, we have to live with it. We don't know when COVID nineteen will be getting the vaccine. So, I think we need to actually work in harmony for now with COVID nineteen. And yes, it actually changed the way we live, transformed business models and consumer behavior. I think you all must have been actively using online shopping, online grocery, and so forth during MCO. So, what does it mean to the private sector, especially the retailer, the businesses, and so forth? So, they need to quickly rethink their business model, using maybe inside of data to actually improve their product, and also doing the marketing. And actually, when we look at this post-COVID nineteen, governments and big technology company can actually work together to encourage the shift of this paradigm to full potential of digital transformation. And having said that, I think recently, or maybe a few months ago, when the government announced the Penjana Program, or what we call Pelanjana Semula Ekonomi, government has actually allocated about thirty-five billion to economic recovery affected by COVID nineteen and as well as MCO. And there are actually two key programs in it, which is e-commerce as well as Shop Malaysia Online. And I think this is to continue encouraging people who don't have to be outside of the house to stay in the house. So, this program actually encouraged to switch people or businesses to do digitalization through jointly funded between government and private sector, especially the e-commerce platform. So, you can see that Lazada, Shopee, Foodpanda, Grab is actually working closely to look at how the e-commerce can actually provide onboarding training, training to the affected people. There are also sales subsidy as well as sales support services. So, the private sector is actually looking at this small micro SME to see how they can actually shift towards digital or online economy so that they can actually together move towards digital transformation. And on online businesses, there are also bank and government sectors such as MDA, SME, and M G T C that look and facilitate SMEs to see how they can increase sales activity, generate revenue with wider market access through online businesses. And, and I think before COVID, I think there are many other banks that also look at green projects. But during or post-COVID nineteen, I think local banks are not doing it. But international banks, for example, like Asian Development Bank, World Bank, Asian Infrastructure Bank, is still talking about giving grant or loans to people who are still interested to look at green technology. And, and I think, having said that, I think what I'm trying to say is that we need to live with COVID, actually, and see how we can complement each other.
Thank you. I think, I think you're spot on, because we, we need to be, have a plan B, right? And, and make sure we're running on plan B, and the ability to switch between A and B is crucial. So, I think at this stage, what I'd like to do is I'd like to invite Puan Lisa to join us before we hear from Tan Sri's conclusion, and then I'll, I'll go back to you, Lisa. For those of you who don't know her, she's, she's organized this whole excellent event with, with a lot of people. There are two important dates today. I, I believe if my statistics are right, today in eighteen ninety-eight or eighteen sixty-eight was the consolidation of the city of New York, coming together as, as the four different wider roots. But the other more important date is today is Lisa's birthday. So, happy birthday. So, we'll, we'll, we'll move to Tan Sri. You've got a, you've got a difficult question on top of what's on the screen. And I think we're talking about change, right? Is change good? We have seen in instances that change has not been good, and nobody likes change, yeah? And, and I think in digital transformation, technology innovation transformation, this is the most important point right now, and, and we've heard from all the speakers have talked about this. So, I think maybe if we could seek your wisdom and identify what should we do more of from, from either public sector perspective or private sector as a solution to, to embrace technology and innovation so that we can make our cities more livable and sustainable?
Thank you. This is a very difficult question, actually, you posed me, that's different from what has been given. But having said that, however, I would like to turn the clock back somewhat. I think one of the comments made or questions made, given, was the private-public partnership. I'd like to dwell on it for a bit, if I read it mind, because I was involved in the Smart Tunnel project. And the Smart Tunnel project is a very bold major infrastructure project for Kuala Lumpur, for the city. And I think not very many people realize that it required guts. It required complete amount of control, because here we have a picture of what flood looked like. Actually, this is a recent flood. But this flood occurred just a few days ago, because that smart project was not so smart after all. But what people did not know was that the smart project was actually intended for half of Kuala Lumpur, not for the whole of Kuala Lumpur. Now, that freak rain that we had, that resulted in this unfortunate flood was because the flood resulted from the rain that covers the whole of Kuala Lumpur. So, in other words, what we really need would have been another smart tunnel, if we could have. Otherwise, this will occur from time to time. But turning the clock back, the Smart Tunnel has actually saved Kuala Lumpur from flooding at least eight times in the last ten years. So, it is actually a worthwhile investment. And at the same time, it was a partnership from private, namely MMC and Gamuda, and government. And, but the key thing is the boldness of the government to take the leap of allowing a tunnel that is used for transportation, that is used for motorcars. Now, I'd like to tell you a little bit about the issues here, because what it means is leadership. What I'm talking about really is leadership. Leadership at the very top, to take an interest in technology and bold enough to take the risks that go with it, and had done some homework, if I can say so, Dr. Mahade was Prime Minister at that time. And when we met him, he already did his homework about the accidents that occur in tunnels in other parts of the world. Not rain, stormwater tunnel, but just ordinary transportation, motorcars and lorries, and so on. And then, when he asked the questions, he also knew the cost of the tunneling. So, we cannot tell him a lie, in a sense, he can call it off. So, and I'm not sure who did it for him, who worked out for him the figures and so on. But he was spot on in some of the figures that he gave. So, leadership, bold leadership, and dared to take the risk, plus supporting the private sector, was the answer that was resulted in the Smart Tunnel.
Thank you. So, is it, is it, is it fair to say that right now we, we have more complicated decisions to be made?
Well, I would like to say that under the present political situation, it is complicated by the numbers as well as the, I suppose, nervousness of the people at the top. But having said that, I think, we talk about COVID nineteen, it helps. Because I think people can gauge the quality of leadership as to how the COVID nineteen has been managed, and can compare it perhaps with the United States and how it had not been managed that well. So, whatever it is, it is unfair to underestimate the present leadership, because they have done quite a good job. Now, but I'm going to the next part of the question, if I may.
Sure.
In terms of COVID nineteen, what we're looking at is how do we make sure that we are able to overcome this pandemic in terms of the business side as well as the support, the political side? Now, I must admit that I am a very optimistic person, and I perhaps know some a bit more secrets of the country in terms of the economic potential that we have. And I can tell you, it is vast. And I can tell you that even if we do not have oil, we have something else. But more importantly, I think we have invested in education. It may not be the best, may not be as good as Singapore, but it is actually comparable to some of the best in the world as well. So, let us not be too negative about, you know, our education system, our political system. Yes, we have some challenges, but I believe at the end of it all, I think we can manage. We can manage the COVID nineteen, we can manage our political future. Now, coming back to technology, can I use my slide to illustrate the point that I want to make?
Sure.
I'd like to have the slide, Nabila, on the twenty-three engineering technologies that we have. Not this one. Not this one, no, the, the other one. Not that one. So these are the areas, the fields of technology of Malaysia Board of Technologies. I have to sell MBOD a little bit because we've been talking about technologies, we've been talking about blockchain, we've been talking about all sorts of other things. But MBOD provides the potential and the possibility of professionalizing the technologists and the technicians that work into all these technologies. Technology doesn't just happen by itself. It has to be supported, it has to be planned, it has to be maintained. And I think these ones with the red boxes are the areas that we took for granted. I was talking about atmospheric science and environment technology, for instance. Not many people know that we do have such courses at the universities, local universities. But we can do some prediction of rain and so on. And it has helped us quite a bit in the, in the predicting for the Smart Tunnel that I was mentioning to you. Electrical electronics is conventional that we know. But among all these boxes, the red dotted line to indicate, these are the things that support what we have been discussing about the urban planning and urban. So what is interesting was of course we have included there green technology, but we have now included art and design and creative multimedia technology. Now, this didn't cross our mind as a technology before. But when we find artificial intelligence and so on, we find that it can be used. It is being used elsewhere in order to maintain very complicated machinery through augmented reality and so on. So it is a technology. And then food technology, we can tend to forget that we all need food. And it is processed sometimes, but is it safe? And then you have got all sorts of other things. But the last but not least in that box is the cybersecurity technology. Initially, we combine it with IT. But then the cybersecurity people get a little bit sensitive because the risk is high. And therefore they said, look, we need to have our own special group. And here we are, we created the special group just for cybersecurity because for all the technologies that we talked about, we do need that security. And the vulnerability that we have, particularly in developed urban centers and so on, we are relying so much on internet and connectivity. And there are a lot of crooks around there who goes for new kinds of cyber crimes and ask for ransoms and so on. So this gives us the strength, hopefully, of implementing all the things that we have been talking about this morning in order to ensure that we do have a very sustainable urban future. Inshallah. Thank you.
That's, that was wonderful. I think I, I'm gonna put that on my vision board in my office actually. I've never seen a slide like that. It's, it's very comprehensive. So I'd, I'd like to maybe throw this a bit differently. I think we spoke about the dual, dual personas, yeah? Having, having a, a physical type of your life where you go through your daily and then you have the digital, yeah? And, and it's sort of, sort of mirroring each other, yeah? And we need to move between this in order to, to move forward in the urban inclusive sort of framework. And, and maybe Lisa, if, if this may be a good time, if you could, having listened and taken down all the notes and done my homework for me, you could maybe tell us, you know, what, what is it that we should be doing differently, you know? And, and, and from, from the public sector and private sector and also from the citizens? I think the Rakyat is a, is a stakeholder of all of this. We can't expect everybody to, you know, solve all our problems if, if we ourselves don't move. So maybe if you could spend a few minutes giving us your wisdom on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Girish, and thank you to all the panelists, you know? It's really great listening to them. And you know, when you put up a topic like this, you would expect quite a, you know, a similar answer maybe, you know? But today it's so diverse. Discussion has been very great. And even choosing the SGs were very different, you know? And that actually reflects on how diverse our thinking is and how diverse our issues are. And that's how we are reacting to this whole, whole thing, you know? So we've been discussing on technology, innovation for quite a while in, in Malaysia. But I think when you put the agenda on sustainability to it, it sort of give it a little bit of a different twist, you know? So I can sense that today. Because I think if I had left that word sustainability out of that equation, probably the discussion would be slightly different. But today, it seems very clear that the people focus is, is there, you know? In, in every one of the panelists' discussion. And definitely for some, the agenda on environment or planet is great. You know, it's, it's also part of that big thing. Because I think at the end of the day, even all the while, we've always think that innovation, technology is only for profits. And that's how the public looks at it, you know? Someone is making big bucks out of this. When someone designs something, at the back of the mind of the normal people, I'm one of that normal people, I'm always assuming that, okay, who's making money? Because you know, Google is a giant, all these guys, I went to San Francisco actually and visited all these companies. They are so huge, super huge, you know? They're super huge that they impacted San Francisco quite a bit. San Francisco is one of the most top homeless city in America. Everywhere on the streets that you walk, you see someone on the streets. How could be the center of Silicon Valley be also poor in that sense? And that's where I think, Arif, I know, I was surprised you picked SGG one, though I know the people, you know, you had a community centric in your work, you know? But yeah, SGG one actually has become quite a thing with tax. And that's what when, when they asked me to go to San Francisco, actually, ADB brought me there. I was wondering why they wanted me to go there because it's not my area. Tax is not my area. But the sustainable agenda was my, is my area. And I think when we went there, we saw what tax was trying to do to improve the city. Google and the program, Twitter, Linkit, they've started to develop a lot of community programs. They have centers in the city where, you know, either as a digital hubs to actually just bring people in, no question asked. I went to this once, went center that run by Twitter. Four days in a week, homeless people are allowed to come in. You know how homeless people in the States are? They don't bathe, they are really dirty. So they come in, no question asked, you know, you come in. So we were there on that particular day. And it's like routine, they come, they, they sign in, they take their bath, they have free coffee and cookies. And then they'll just walk around these areas and they play around with the computers. The whole objective of why Twitter was doing it is because they realize that a lot of people now don't know how to, to look for jobs, how to write a resume, how to fill in a form. So it was as simple as that because, I mean, if someone has been in prison for twenty-five years, they come out, it's a different world altogether. Technology has actually completely changed the whole system. They would really not know how to go about it. So it was quite an eye opener for me, you know? And I see San Francisco, we went to the library, they brought us to the library. Again, I was asking why we're going to the library? It was quite an incredible visit because it was generally arranged by ADB because to open our eyes, you know? And all of us were just people involved in cities. So when we went to the library, they bring all kinds of people, poor, homeless, women. And these people can just go into the library and their library is fantastic. They have an innovation center in their library. It's not a library where you just read and borrow books. It's a, I've never seen a library like that. It has two floors just on tech, teaching people new. And, and by the way it's done, it's actually over time because they train so many people, it's actually run by social workers, not librarians anymore. So I see this city, you know, because I, I used to live in the, in the States. But that was in late nineties, early two thousand. It's very different, Muna, how it's gone when Muna was in the States. I find that it's like, okay, on one side you have this big problem, but on one side you have this fixing the problem. And it's all about trying to get that equation back into place, you know? And that's where a lot of you are trying to do here and trying to create that change. And, and, and I think as long as we keep in mind these very important needs of people in the cities, I think technology, innovation can play a big role into changing one, one person's life, you know? And I spoke to a social worker who was in the library and she told me exactly that she actually has a degree now, you know, in, in social working and but she did it through all the way with the help of the library. So I think we, we, you know, a lot of the discussions just now, you know, how that leadership is not only need to be bold and taking risk, but it also needs to have a lot of empathy, a lot of understanding as to what we are going through today. If not, the equation will never, we'll never be able to match it back because digital and technology is moving so fast and we can just learn from San Francisco because that's where the giants are. But they never, I mean, it's not the Californians are hired. It's all over the world, people are getting hired. So actually, the Californians don't get the jobs. So that's why they are so, people in California are generally poorer. So the giants are there, but the locals are not benefiting. So I think this is where it's very important. Maybe COVID is good in the sense that we now are all thinking local, you know? Thinking local a lot and, and then using local a lot. You know, harnessing on, on our own talents a lot more now. And suddenly I think it makes more sense. So it's a perfect timing, I think, you know? So I think there's a lot of inputs here, you know? Every view was actually very relevant. But if we could put those views together as one, one integrated and holistic thing, I think we've got the solution, yeah? But I think once we go out of this room, we go back to our silos. We go back to our day routine and, and then it gets difficult back. And I think that's why Asha is facing. Asha is going through a very simple issue, bureaucracy. So they've got good technology, they've proven it in fourteen countries, but they cannot get it accepted officially. And I think that's something that needs to be undone. And it's actually very difficult. I know what she's going through. And it's something that I think probably that's what the way forward should be looking at, Girish, you know? How to do this holistically in an integrated manner? How can partnerships really come in stronger? How can the big companies actually play a more important role in understanding the issues on the ground? And I think maybe we can, we can move forward and use technology really not really to leapfrog, but really solving our problems on the ground.
Thank you. That, that was a great conclusion. Unfortunately, we, we're out of time and I think we have twenty seconds to take a group photo. But I couldn't tell Lisa to cut short, guys, you know, she's organizing this event. But on, on my part, I'd like to thank all the panelists for spending time today here. I think we've, I've learned a lot today. And yeah, I think I've got a lot of notes, Lisa. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna summarize this and maybe share it on the social media and, and we could take it forward. But technology is important, but more importantly, is solving the Rakyat's issues. So how do we bridge that, yeah? I think that's the conclusion that I'm hearing with strong leadership and bold leadership. And not too much change. Thank you. Thank you very much.